Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the council meeting to order and I'll apologize for the tardy start. We were waiting to get a quorum before we got started this evening. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now I'll open up for public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council. Now's the time. Seeing no movement from the floor, I'm going to go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. That stands as approved. No public hearing tonight. So we'll move into unfinished business and we have one item. It's the distressed property at 217 Main. I'm sure Ethan has an update for us there.
Yeah, we, um, the new owner has picked up the quit claim to transfer that property into their ownership. And that is being filed with the register of deeds. So as that transfer of the property is well underway, staff would recommend that we postpone any future distressed property hearings for about a period of six months to allow them to get in the building and start on that. And then we'll get a status update.
You said for about, about how many months?
Six months. So we-
So you want to give us a date and we can continue that to that date?
It, um, assuming we're going to the second and fourth Wednesdays, uh, the last meeting in June would be June 24th of 2026.
So he'll just be giving us an update with what his, what his pro- progress is on it at that point?
Yeah, you guys say when before the property was transferred, he presented kind of his plan and-
Sure.
All that, but yeah, allowing it, knowing, you know, in the winter work might be dependent on weather and-
Sure. Well, Mr. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that city council revisit the distressed property at 217 Main in June on the 24th of 26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing for 217 Main to the council meeting June 24th, 2026. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. That passes under new business. Uh, first item is golf cart fleet expansion replacement. I believe we have golf course superintendent, Mr. Sam Eberle here to tell us his plan.
Yeah, um, so in 2022, we had five golf carts to our fleet. Um, what this did was it opened up multiple tee times, uh, for us and that helped grow our leagues during the week. So we currently have six leagues, um, going Monday through Thursday. So two on Tuesday and two on Thursday. Uh, we also play anywhere between 15 to 20 tournaments a year. Uh, so, you know, we stay pretty busy throughout the, on the golfing season. Um, you know, but there always comes a problem with that. And so we do host three to five tournaments per year where we're needing extra carts. So we always have to go out, find an outside source to rent these carts. And this becomes very expensive for the golf course and the host tournament people. And what the, the tournaments that we host are benefit tournaments. So not only is it the Hallstead community that benefits from it, it's the surrounding community. So for example, you know, we host the Newton Swim Club, the Hallstead Community Foundation, the Sal's Night Tournament, uh, the Haven High School Basketball Tournament, the Newton Mexican-American Softball Golf Tournament, and a new one this year that I'm really excited to host is the Hallstead High School Basketball Golf Tournament. So out of these six tournaments, we've had to bring in carts for four of those in the past.
Typically, how many carts are you bringing in when you do that?
Five, typically five. Um, there are some cases where, you know, we do need more. Um, but usually we do have some of the members that store carts out there will be playing. So we save like four or five carts on that. So it's typically, we need five carts every time. Um, but the cost to rent carts is anywhere between $300 and a thousand. So, and that's anywhere between five and seven carts. Uh, and that include, you know-
Per cart?
No, that is for, that's the total. So 300 would be-
For the event?
Well, 300 would be like if we only needed two carts.
Okay.
A thousand would be like we need seven to 10 carts. Um, and we have, you know, there's only one company in this area right now that rents carts. Uh, the person I've used the last four or five years is starting to get out of it. Um, company right down the road, uh, is no longer renting to golf courses. So, you know, it kind of puts us in that weird situation too. Where do we find these carts?
Is turf isn't doing that anymore?
Didn't know.
Okay.
I, I haven't been able to get carts through them. I knew they were trying to weed out their fleet. I know for bigger events, I think they do, but like for smaller golf course, it just, you know, it's not really feasible.
Okay.
I could be a hundred percent wrong on that too, but I just know I have not been able to get carts from them. Um, so during the golf season, we normally run out of carts by 11 a.m. on weekends. Uh, and we currently do not rent car, we currently rent carts on a first come, first served basis. So we require tee times for the most part, you know, we do have the occasional walk-ins and if we have carts, we let them have them. But we like to have tee times. That way we know how many carts are getting rid at one time. So, you know, if two people play, it's one cart. Four people play, it's two carts. But what happens since they are all reserved by 11 o'clock, um, we have to block off from 11 to noon. So we cannot take tee times unless you're walking from 11 to noon because we don't have the, the carts available. So we're hoping that eight o'clock timeframe is done by noon, which is four hours, enough time to finish 18 holes out there to where we can start it back up at noon and the carts can go back out. So it, 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 it's really confusing trying to get these carts out. We've, you know, we've had miscommunications where we've had people wait. And it never ends great, but you know, we make it work. Um, the other thing is we turn away a lot of tee times when we don't have the carts. So between that 11 to noon, you know, we're turning away three or four groups on Saturday and Sunday. You know, anywhere between two players and six players. So, you know, we get four groups of six players. We're losing on 24 green fees. We're losing on 24 cart rentals because we rent half carts.
Well, what kind of a deal did you find?
Well, um, you know, the proposal I am making is to trade in the five club cars that we have. One which is not run, one that has been in the shop, out of the shop, replaced all engine components, wiring, throttle components, still not running, and replace those five with 10, 20, 21 Yamaha AFI carts. And with a price not to exceed 28,000. I do want to say I went to the Kansas Turf Conference this last week and I talked to Yamaha quite a bit about these carts. And the one thing I was concerned about and kept bringing up was, you know, these are older carts. They lost their fourth year warranty. So these are not coming with the warranty, but they verbally committed to putting and attaching that fourth year warranty on the carts for one year. And that covers all major components on the carts.
That's $2,800 a golf cart, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty cheap.
That's also including a trade-in. It's 20, they gave us 2,300 per cart or right around 2,300.
What year are those club cars we're trading on?
Eighteens.
Okay.
Are they, uh, all electric, Sam?
No, they're all gas.
Do you have, uh, I know we did some regrouping on the where you storm and stuff. Is that all done?
Yep, it's all done. Yep, it looks really nice.
So we got room to put them?
We have room to fit-
I know that was a consideration.
Yep, no, we have fi- room to fit five more comfortably, um, which would make 18, but we came into a pinch and we had to store some more in there. We can fit 24. So.
It's probably a lot handier than what you had before.
Yeah.
When you parked it clear on the other side.
Yep, no, it's been a, it's been a good change to have emptied out the shop. So now I have a shop again. So.
Uh, what do you need a shop for, Sam?
Yeah.
Hopefully you won't have to work on them as much.
Nope.
Well, we knew this was, um, going to happen and, uh, you know, I think it's a good thing.
Means you're rolling.
Yeah, if there's no more questions or discussion, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, um, approve the purchase of 10 2021 Yamaha AFI golf carts, um, trade in five of the 2018 golf carts, yeah, for a purchase not to exceed $28,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this golf cart swap. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. There you go, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks for the research, Sam.
Yeah, thank you, Sam.
Troy had a golf cart down the street in front of his store for sale for 4,900. It was a used-
If you've seen the other two bids in here, you'll find this. Did you see that one for, it was 79,000, so.
Yeah, I've priced golf carts.
That's a bargain, right?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
All right, next item under new business is the industrial park cell tower land lease extension proposal. I imagine it's for the AT&T Tower and then?
Yeah, um, so the city has had a long-term lease, um, on that land. Uh, it started with Singular, um, AT&T. Now currently the, the company is SBA Towers Four who's managing that lease. Um, the current lease is set to expire in 2035. They're being extremely proactive and would like to, uh, seek a lease extension. Um, that would granted it five successive five-year terms, um, which would extend the lease potentially through 2060. That, uh, we've parceled that, as you know, and did some lot divisions. So, um, there's advantages to us also at least renegotiating and make sure the legal description and all that has been updated appropriately. But we also believe, um, looking at that lease payment price is in order to, um, just comparatively speaking to some other communities that hold similar leases, um, that we can push that probably closer to current market rate. Compared to the, where they went, because that extended lease obviously had a, a guaranteed, um, expansion every five years of, or increase, um, which is, I think, put us a little bit below market. So just seeking your approval to enter in and start to try and negotiate a lease extension. You have their initial offer, um, included there in the packet, which essentially just extended the terms, but that was it. I mean, everything else pretty much stayed exactly the same as far as the, the modification to the lease payments and that.
They want to go to 2060?
Yeah, uh, that, they'd buy the city out too if we want them to. It's just typically what you're offered is only about 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the equivalent of, so if you keep the lease longer than 10 years, you're losing money.
Yeah. Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve staff negotiate terms of a lease agreement extension with SBA Towers and to bring a final negotiation extension agreement for final consideration to the city council.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for staff to negotiate a new contract, uh, for the cell tower in the industrial park. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. That passes. So, so get us back up to current market value.
It's not, it's not going to move mountains, but I mean, there's room for improvement.
Cool. All right, we do have one executive session on the agenda this evening and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations. Consideration with attorney on matters of what would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption. KSA 75 dash 4319 B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney via telephone and to reconvene at 7:50.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. We will be in executive session.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on to the report section of the agenda. We always start with governing body comments, so tonight I'll start with you, Jim.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
George?
Oh, gosh, I keep mentioning this. Seeing people blowing their leaves and their grass into the curb, into the gutters when they're mowing, that's really hard on our stormwater system. So, Bill, if you could put a little blip in the paper, please don't blow your debris out into the street, into the curb and gutter. It's hard on the system. That's all.
All right, Denise?
Well, I think everybody enjoyed the, uh, good grief, no, I just had a brain fart. It's time to go, uh, yeah, the jingle over the weekend. And hopefully they did well with the soup supper and everybody enjoyed the cocoa crawl and, Riverside Park looks really pretty with all the lights. That's one of the things I love about Christmas is all of the lights. So, kudos to our Holsted Community Organization for getting that, putting that together and saw some people enjoying their carriage rides. So, well done. Thank you.
All right. Well, I missed the jingle because I had to go to Kansas City for a retirement party, so I haven't seen Riverside Park yet. So, I plan to drive through there before I go home this evening. That's all I got. And so, we'll go to Ethan for the city manager report. And when you're done with that, you roll right into your financial, Ethan.
Okay. Building on what Councilmember Clausen, I just want to thank the Holsted Community Foundation and all the volunteers and local businesses that participated in the Christmas jingle on Saturday. I want to thank Public Works for their assistance to the foundation with getting the lights up and helping Macy know where she could connect and all that. And especially thank the volunteers and then Continental Lake Company for their efforts in decorating the trees in Riverside Park. It looks very festive. I also want to thank Harvey County for allowing us use of their mobile signs for the Christmas jingle event, which is always appreciated to call some attention there at Riverside Park since it's kind of right on the other side of the bridge and at the end of 89. As the year is winding down, most departments are preparing for the fiscal year transition or trying to wrap up ongoing projects. Both the asphalt patching around town and the concrete alley repairs on the east side 300 block of Main Street have been completed. Public Works has also been out grading unpaved streets as conditions and other projects have allowed. City's audit team will be on site this week to begin their preliminary field work related to the 2025 audit. Staff have scheduled a meeting with Conference Technologies to discuss the current condition of our streaming equipment and the technology in the council chambers as some of our component, components are beginning to age out. As hard as it is to believe because it feels like we just put that in last year. The city has completed the transition to the cloud-based server solution and has been operating on it for a couple of weeks now. By and large, it has been a smooth transition for most staff and we're working with Imagine IT to correct the occasional issues that we have encountered with that transition. But so far, knock on wood, it is going fairly well. And then for financial, you have the monthly handout there with the capital equipment balances on the back. But November's been soft closed and is waiting final reconciliation with the city treasurer across all budgeted funds. The city continues to hover around being about half million dollars unfavorable to last year's cash position for the same period. The general fund's the primary fund that's most unfavorable to its previous position, followed by the gas fund. Again, trends that should not come as news to anyone here based on the past financial reports. Compared to the previous fiscal year through November, the general fund revenues are running about 8% lower while expenditures are running about 3% higher than the same time last year. The revenue decline in the general fund is a combination of the loss of the EMS contract revenue and lower run volumes, lower account interest revenues, lower franchise fee revenues, and lower property contract revenues. As has been the continuing case with the gas fund, it is in its unfavorable position being caused by the city's continued focus on making expedited payments on our state utility loan from winter storm year in 2021, causing its expenditures to run higher overall in that fund. While this cash position is unfavorable in comparison to our previous fiscal year, the city overall remains in a good fiscal position. Overall, revenues are just slightly under where we would expect them to be according to budget projections while expenditures are below the 90% goal that departments strive for as we approach the end of the fiscal year. City utility funds continue to be in healthy shape and staff are now going over fund performance for the year as well as looking at upcoming adjustments such as the anticipated tipping fee increases with Harvey County to determine if current rate structures will need to be adjusted for the next fiscal year or beyond. For the city's capital funds, the largest change from the previous month was the $136,000 local share payment that was made to KDOT for the Safe Routes to School Phase One construction work. Both the city equipment fund and the capital improvement fund still maintain respective balances of just under a million dollars. These balances are higher than anticipated as the city awaits upcoming capital purchases such as the new ambulance and local matching funds for the North Street project. Staff will, as we continue marching towards the end of our fiscal year, evaluate those year-end transfers as we get closer and we estimate right now that we should be fairly close to our anticipated budget for year-end cash balances in most funds and carryover into the new fiscal year come January. And that is all I have unless there's any specific questions.
Counsel, any questions of Ethan's report? See the one I'm... If not, we are done with our agenda. I would appreciate a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.